Earlier saying that she would not be able to join, so. We have a quorum, we will go ahead and get started, I'll call the meeting to order. And is there anyone that would um make a motion to approve the agenda in minutes, or is there any discussion?
I'll move to approve both the agenda and the minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, I'm muted, second.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Most agenda and minutes are approved. So first on the agenda is a review and discussion, uh followed by making a decision on the creation of the proposed zoning overlay map, so. I had provided um email a few days ago, um I think late last week, that had zoning district assignment proposal, um let me share my screen, I'll pull that up. Everybody see my screen, okay? Nope, nope, not yet, one more button to push, there we go. Now you should be able to see it.
Yep, yep.
Okay, um so it has the uh the zones that are on there. Um there's a little bit of um preamble, if you will, um you know about the fact that, you know, it's a, we're an agricultural county, um the development plan calls for preservation of agriculture and conservation land along with legitimate, um well, not legitimate, but along with economic development consistent with the high quality of life. Um so based on those predicates, um I was suggesting that we apply a default of A1 all across the rest of the county with certain exceptions. Uh and then it went on to describe what those um exceptions are down through here, did you guys get a chance to read through that?
Yeah, no, this is basically all, you're doing all of them all.
Can you get up a little closer, David? You get to go.
Ah, sorry, um yeah, this was, this is taken right out of the zoning map, correct?
Well, it, yes, this first part, yeah, that's right out of the existing zoning, yep. That's what the zoning ordinance says today. And so it's just, yeah, I, I think, since, you know, we were, ultimately what we need to do is, once we make a decision tonight, um we'll give this information to NICOG, and then they can go in and create overlay maps that will show this stuff. And so I just wanted to write up something succinct to be able to, to give to them, you know, once we've agreed on what it is that we should do.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my point is, is we're just taking the wheel we already have and rolling it over the rest and, and uh you know, maturity of the existing conditions, shall we say, um
Correct.
You know, need to be, we got a rock quarry and it's, it's still gonna be a rock quarry after we sold it. Uh when I look at it, what's currently there, um it's just the future going forward.
Right.
The way I look at it.
Yep, that's correct, and the um is, one of the other things too, that I think we will, we'll talk about when we um we talk about the first um public meeting or public hearing that we have, um we want to let folks know that this is just an interim map that we're asking NICOG to produce, um so we can get feedback on that stuff. You know, there'll be a separate, separate public uh hearing, um where we'll have to figure out you know, if, if people say, well, you guys are saying my land should be zoned as, you know, industrial heavy because I'm running a, a quarry there, I don't think I should, you know, I, I wanna, uh I wanna dispute that. We'll have to come up with some kind of mechanism for disputes. The other thing we'll want to let folks know is um if they've got something on their land that is um out of, uh out of bounds, if you will, from the existing zoning ordinance. They'll say they've got some buildings or something that does not comply with setback requirements, as an example. Um everything that exists today uh would be identified as, as non-conforming aspects. And the zoning ordinance has a whole chapter on um non-conformance. And existing non-conforming structures are essentially grandfathered in, there's, you know, they, they don't have to do anything uh to bring them into, into compliance, so long as they continue in the existing use. It's only if they were to um, you know, build something new or substantially expand something that um, that they would have to bring it into compliance, but as, as long as it exists when the ordinance goes into effect, then it's grandfathered in. But do you guys have any other thoughts or discussion on these items, you know, particularly the ones on this page here?
Jeff, it's a super minor little uh addition, but on the, the first, it'd be B1. Um the CSR, I assume they're gonna change that to CSR2, though?
Well, right now, the, the zoning ordinance just says CSR seventy or less. Um you know, there, there's probably um a variety of things that we, we might want to go in and change in the zoning ordinance, for instance, I was looking um the other day, there's actually, and I hadn't realized this before, I guess I, and I had read through it um a couple of years ago, but I guess I hadn't read through close enough. There is, in in section nine on the regulation for the ag district, it goes into how many animals you can keep based on um the size of the property and such. Yeah, talking about how many um horses, cattle, sheep, goats, etc. You know, those kinds of things probably need to get changed to animal units, if there's gonna be um, you know, a, a rules on how many they can have. So anyway, my point is, there's probably things that um may get changed in the future, but for the most part, I think if we operate under the premise that this ordinance has been in place for quite a number of years across the three townships that are zoned today, um you know, for, for immediate purposes, if it's good for those three, we should be able to just extend it to the other nine. Um and then just go through the work of applying those zone assignments. Um I think through all this process and the feedback that we'll get, we may find all kinds of things that we want to revisit that are in the ordinance, but I don't think we want to go through and try to make a bunch of changes to the ordinance right now. With one exception, um and so I'm gonna scroll down to uh three, uh three, five here. Um as it talks about here, there's a lot of land in the county that in the land use codes, if we were to simply say to NICOG, everywhere where you see a land use code of exempt, turn that into, you know, XYZ zone. Um I think that wouldn't work because we have land use that is exempt because there's, there's a church sitting on it, or it's exempt because the county, state, or federal government owns it for public recreation land. Uh there's a couple of instances where there is public utilities uh that are on the land. And so we need to divide that up a little bit, which is what I did in this enclosure too. You know, I looked at a variety of parcels, you know, some of them are churches, uh some of the exempt are ag, etc. Um but there's a lot of it that is um it's set aside for um public land for hunting, wildlife management, and things of that nature. If you look at our existing zone designations here, there's none of these that really makes sense to apply to that kind of public land. We have to apply some kind of zone to it. It doesn't fall into one of these, so I think it may make sense, and you guys tell me what your thoughts are, if we add a new zone called Critical Natural Resource. I came up with that term because the county development plan pulls these kinds of areas, critical natural resources, that the county development plan wants to preserve. And so we could create a zone called Critical Natural Resource, assign it to that public land. And for the definition of, and the rules around that, um I got, essentially, it's one page of um text here that I borrowed from Story County. They call it Green Belt Conservation District, we would call it Critical Natural Resource. Um and we could lift this language out of the Story County zoning and apply it to ours. And it gives these kinds of permitted uses uh in those areas. The conditional use, where it says, see chapter ninety, um their chapter ninety says, conditional use of campgrounds, lodges, and fraternal organizations, um public utility for the purpose of generating power, except commercial uh wind, adaptive reuse for these folks, and astronomical observatories, so. What are your guys' thoughts on that? Or something down that path?
Makes sense, it's a good start, it can be altered later.
Yeah, do you think we need to make some kind of an assignment? Well, we have to make some kind of an assignment to that kind of land, the county land, state land, federal land that is set up for conservation, wildlife management, or public hunting. So if we don't create a new zone designation, then we would have to figure out, well, which one of these do we apply to it?
Well, in the current zoned area, we have lots of those, what are they currently zoned at?
Right now, they're zoned as ag, everything is ag except for commercial.
And the reason to change that?
I just thought it would be.
Me, I, I think we should, you know, I, I'm not gonna say that two years from now we shouldn't change that, but to me, uh, uh, Jack, my whole thought of what we're doing now is, is more of the zoning the, the county and, and not really diving in and changing the zoning itself. I feel like I'm too wrong myself.
Yeah, and I could go either way on, I, I think it's gonna raise the question of, well, if you're adding a zone, you know, a new designation, then why not make some other changes, you know?
Boss to Jeff, yep.
To the fact that that land is zoned as ag, that kind of land is zoned as ag. And so I don't think it is, you know, it, it, it's breached anybody's consciousness. When we apply it for the rest of the county now, um yeah, I just thought the people are gonna raise the question, so well, why are we taking conservation land and saying that we're designating that as ag? So I, I think we're gonna get hit with questions, one side or the other, which is why I'm bringing this up. We just gotta figure out which direction we want to go, so it's options. What's your thoughts on it, Justin?
Well, my first initial was, uh is, I see a reason to put that as a class code, but then it might be something for now, just to see what everybody, you know, in the, in the first couple meetings here, meeting one, meeting two, to see what their opinion is, and just leave it as is versus um changing it right now. Um I guess I could go either way, but for simplicity right now, maybe, I guess my opinion would be leave it as ag now. And then if we get the questions at the meetings, then we can alter it, you know, then, or leave it alone.
Sure. Okay, Todd, your thoughts?
I pretty much feel the same way Justin does, I mean, using that green belt example is a, is a formatted way to go ahead and put that in and make a change, but I think the less changes we try to make now, the easier it is to actually get the zoning countywide. Instead of going in and trying to change a bunch of things and, and getting too aggressive at updating, we just need to get worried about getting it accepted countywide.
Yeah, so that land, let me back up here a moment. So the exempt land that is um public land for hunting, wildlife management, conservation, etc. Um let me see. So we would designate as um ag. There's my highlighter. Um and then there's a lot of public land that, and I, I had provided a copy of the land use codes that I got from the assessor's office, that is, all of these um that are DNR-related designations. Um we would designate that as A1 as well. So really, the only thing that so if it's, if that stuff's gonna be designated as A1, then the only thing that is exempt that would get defined as something else would be this stuff like um churches and parsonages, um public utilities, things of that nature. Do we still have to address a couple of the EXs, so I'll, I'll clean this up. But that one actually goes away.
Hey Jeff, Matt, just playing devil's advocate a little bit here. Um you put together a lot of these parcel numbers and kind of designated something that you think that, you know, would be what it is, um on some of the conversations that I had with uh folks with Winnebago County, as they started the process, they just listed everything as ag, and it kind of worked itself out for what their use needs to be when they file for a permit, so um that, I guess that's just my, my question, because if we gotta change zoning, just kind of looking at it, I mean, that, that, that needs to be, you know, uh, public hearings and, and neighbors within so many feet need to uh be aware of, of changes and stuff like that, so. I'm just kind of interested to see why you would give individual parcel changes, instead of just doing a blanket ag1 and, and, and just uh, you know, wait for somebody like this, you know, uh 006 um needing a building permit for something um for their scrap processing, and then we could, we could, if the zoning goes through countywide, it would start the the process for them to adhere to the, you know, the, the 1H designation, I, I'm just curious, I.
Well, I just thought that because these, you know, there, there's a number of these things that are so obvious. You know, there, there's campgrounds that um, you know, they're, they're, you can see them when you drive by, you can see them when you look at GIS, even without zooming in, likewise with uh um, you know, the, the gravel pits and the, the scrap yards and things of that nature. And so I, I think it, it would be appropriate, and because we have those kinds of things, you know, in the existing uh townships, they should be zoned for what they are. I just felt that as we extend zoning to the other townships, we should zone those things from the get-go for what they are. And, you know, and, and we'll have the public meetings where folks will, you know, they'll, they'll um have an opportunity to see that this is what the, the land is, is being um zoned as. Um I think it raises um less of a probability for questions at these public hearings, if we zone them for what they are now, as opposed to saying everything is ag, and then feel, you know, twenty-five questions from thirty-five different people saying, well, why is this scrapyard ag, why is this gravel pit ag?
But what, but what, what if I was the owner of the gravel pit? And it, it is what it is, you know, I don't support the zoning, and, you know, now you're gonna, you, you're gonna force my parcel to adhere to all these guidelines now, or it didn't before. Um and I'm not changing anything, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm just, because we're gonna get both sides, I, I, I know, because.
Yeah, 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 but the, the, so what exists today, even though it's, it may not be conforming, and I, I don't know if it is or not, so, you know, if we pick on um uh, uh wild horse trading as an example, um actually, they might be inside, incident.
But I know, I know.
Anyway, let's, let's, let's go with, let's go with Bucks, and, and there's a scrapyard over on the west side that may be a better example, uh on, on the west side of the county, that's out in the country. Um it is operating as a scrapyard today, um and I think it's appropriate to recognize it for what it is. However, that setup today, whatever buildings and, and fencing, or whatever else is in place today, is um, is, is, you know, it, it, it's, it's grandfathered, if it's non-conforming, um it's non-conforming because the zoning is being applied to it today. It's only if they were to expand the operation, or, or, you know, add new things that they would have to bring, that those new things would have to come in um uh under compliance. But, you know, if they've got a shed that's uh too close to the edge of the line, or, you know, something of that nature, they can operate that thing for the next fifty years, so long as they're not making any changes to it, because it, it's non-conforming at the time that the zoning got applied.
Right, that's what I'm just saying, it just seems like a lot more work than, because, because the, if, if they wanted to change something, um even as designated ag, because that's how the, 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 from what I understand, understood, um Winnebago and Worth kind of did the same thing roughly at the same time. Um the, 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 the three townships that, that Worth County had, there was only uh a little bit of designation of special zoning in and around the casino area. Everything else is, 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 is ag, and it always was. So that, because, because they didn't go through like what you're doing right here, through those three townships, to kind of comb through and see what the uses are right now, I, I, I'm just asking, just because, you know, it wasn't done that way to begin with.
Well, I, I don't know what they did to begin with, I mean, the, the reality is, the, the zoning ordinance went into place in the seventies as a result of the interstate coming through, because the, uh it, it was a requirement that um that they had to manage development along that interstate corridor. And so they created the zoning ordinance, uh in Worth County anyway, and applied it to just those three townships. Now, in two thousand five, two thousand six, when the county did its countywide development plan, uh the recommendation by that committee was to apply zoning countywide. The supervisors at the time said, no, we're gonna keep it just associated with those uh three townships that run along the, the corridor. And um they, they, they do have um commercial zones set up um in, in various locations, you know, in those three townships, not just around that um, that interchange where the casino's at. What they did in two thousand nine, when they updated this um zoning ordinance, or what they did in seventeen, nineteen seventy, when they created it, you know, I, I, I don't know. But, you know, I, I think if, if things are obviously industrial areas or commercial areas, we ought to zone them for what they are being used for, if we're gonna apply zoning, I don't think it just, in my mind, it doesn't make sense to say that gravel pit is ag.
Well, can I, I'm just kind of checking for understanding here a little bit, and, and what I'm hearing Matt say, if we throw a blanket of A1 over the rest of the county, and the gravel pit continues to operate as it is, it can operate under A1, as long as it operates as is today. They don't want to put up a shed, now they have to apply for the special use permit and be rezoned as heavy industrial. And if, if they don't change anything, they don't have to do, do any permits, am I hearing that right, what you're saying, Matt?
Y, y, yeah, it's basically the grandfather deal, because I, I ran into this um southwest of Thompson, there was a uh an old contractor that always had stuff there, they had heavy equipment all the time, running in and out of there, and it changed hands, A and B welding, and Holland Contracting had it, now another guy ended up with it, and he was kind of using it for the same thing, but he was crushing concrete uh all hours of the day and night, and the neighbors called and said, hey, can he do that? And my conversation with him was, for you to be able to do that, it's gotta be, you know, heavy industrial, unless you can prove that that has been, you know, you, you've been crushing concrete since before two thousand uh two or three, when Winnebago County adopted their stuff. And, and obviously, he couldn't, I mean, he didn't even own the property, so it, it triggered the rezone process, so. You know, I understand the whole grandfather, I, I think you're just gonna get, and this is just me being devil's advocate, I think you're gonna get more buy-in by doing a blanket A1 than you are. A one than you are from the person that says, well, I don't have a scrap processing. They don't wanna be known for something like that. Um, you know, uh, don't tell me what I have and don't tell me what I what I can and cannot do. Like I said, I'm just the administrator. I'm just just trying to, uh, uh, these are the phone calls that I get. So, um, it it just kind of food for thought, so.
Well, Matt, I think you're right on the right track by saying that. Uh, Jeff is trying to get a more accurate picture and map of what's going on in the county. And you're saying, you know, that can come in the future. And I think that's that's one of the main things that I've been concerned of is there's been such a taboo word of zoning in this county. If we don't, if we, the more we try to change right now, I think the more resistance we're gonna get, the more time it's gonna take. And then it's not gonna get done again. That's that's my fear.
And 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 that's the only, I've been kinda quiet up to this point. Believe me, all the phone calls that I get, you know, being zoning administrator for Worth and Winnebago County, I w- when AJ talked to me about being zoning administrator and he said, it should be easy, only three townships are zoned, everything else is unzoned. And my jaw kinda hit the floor because I just don't understand a lot of that, but probably eighty percent of the phone calls are people that are unzoned and they can do pretty much whatever they want. I don't think as zoning administrator, we've got regulations set up to kind of protect each other, neighbors. And I I wish Worth County was zoned a hundred percent. Um, I hope that it works out to be that way, but I think just trying to get public buy-in, um, I think if we start scrutinizing individual parcels, it 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 could get interesting. I I, that's just my thoughts, so.
Well, they, the other side of that, you're 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 right, Matt, that if you know, if if um, again, we'll use a scrapyard example. If if the scrapyard just fell under a blanket ag across the county, um, the scrapyard would could continue to operate just as it is today. And um, if they decide to expand, put up a new building, what have you, um, then they would have to go through permitting potentially. Um, and at that point, the contradiction would come up that says, well, you're zoned as ag, but you're actually operating uh, light industrial. So we're gonna have to rezone you and then go through a public hearing um, for that and rezone them. That's true. On the flip side of that, though, if they're zoned as ag, there's all manner of things that they can do um, on that property that are permitted use or accessory use in the ag zone that is not at all appropriate to be done in a light industrial zone. So they would be living under false pretense of being able to do certain things under the ag zone rules for an area that shouldn't be zoned ag. And that's why I think, you know, for for these places that are clearly, uh, I mean, there is no question what the nature of of um, uh, 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 work is going on in these locations, the nature of the business, et cetera. Um, I I think there there's no dispute that, well, this is light industrial activity. That's the zone it should have. They may not like it. Um, they may prefer to be ag, but what they're doing is not ag. It's light industrial. And and, you know, that that Yeah, it
But tha- that's what's already
It does allow them to operate under the false pretense.
W- Worth County is way behind and we've been running under false pretenses. Whether we've got zoning in place or not zoning in place, whether it's in the three townships that are zoned or the rest of the county that aren't, that's pretty much how it's been running anyway. And if you wanna use the word false pretense or the word grandfathered in, it's the same thing.
No, they would be grandfathered in doing the light industrial stuff with however they're set up.
Right, but that's also the same thing as as grandfathering at this point. With without
That's what I'm saying. That that would be grandfathered in, but if we say they're 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 zoned ag, then there's a variety of things that they could do on that property that they really shouldn't be doing because it's not that kind of an area. It's a light industrial area.
But that's what's happening right now anyway.
But it's different kinds of stuff, though. Yeah, if it, so in other words, if if we're saying, so when when we say zoning applies, what that means is there's certain rules that have to be abided by from today going forward. What you're doing already exists, you're grandfathered. But going forward, there's certain rules you have to abide by. And all I'm saying is if we know that it's being operated as light industrial uh, um, activity, those are the rules they should live by going forward, not ag or some other set of rules. Because it's not ag. They're not performing ag things.
And 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 that's that's, and you're totally right in that statement. But the problem is, in order to get the zoning in and get it passed, we can get, so that we get things started, so that we can start updating in the future. We're not gonna get all of these places covered right now anyway. This is gonna be an ongoing process over a couple of years to get all of these pieces updated correctly. And and it's gonna take a lot of show and tell and neighbors talking about each other and I don't know, please, it's 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 not gonna be done with a lot of accuracy right now in the timeframe that we have.
I I agree. There's there's gonna be ongoing requirements and and we're not gonna hit everything. But, you know, when when you've got a half a mile of a gravel pit, that's pretty obvious. Well, call it what it is. It's a gravel pit. Zone it appropriate, you know, zone it as a gravel pit. Don't zone it as ag. Don't zone it as residential. Zone it for what it is. It's it's obvious. It's staring us in the face. Now, if there's some that we miss, well, they're gonna get uh, addressed at some point in the future, but I think it is appropriate for us um, to to identify those things that are blatantly obvious and call them for what they are.
Jeff, just a- a- another another thought too. What if, what if I come to the meeting and said, hey, I see all these parcel numbers. They're they're designated as this stuff and and you don't have mine on there and I wanna be designated as uh, you know, uh, you know, industrial because I wanna be able to sell guns.
That's, that's why, that's exactly why I think we wanna provide this kinda stuff to NIAC to create these overlays, provide this to the public and have the public hearing so people can give us that kinda feedback. You know, if the guy that's running the gravel pit says, hey, I don't think I should be zoned industrial light or industrial heavy, well, we can have that conversation with them. If another one pops up and says, hey, I'm running such and such out of my place. I should be zoned as X, Y, Z, not ag. We can have that kinda conversation. But that's why I think we wanna make this stuff, um, you know, put it out there and let people look at it.
Yep. And it it, you know, and another thing thinking too, you know, we've we've, I've had, you know, some inquiries. I used the gun, you know, somebody wanted to build guns in their house and, you know, as a machinist and and sell them and I, you know, I kinda walked them through the process. That's also, you know, uh, you know, money for the county. There's, you know, there's applications and permits and stuff like that too. So, you know, um, going through something like this, if we did a blanket ag and then somebody else came through and said, you know, hey, you know, I I feel like I'm industrial. I wanna be able to do this type of stuff. We could throw them through the pro- process and and collect, you know, fees and stuff that way too. Um, I think we're leaving some stuff out on the table monetarily um, by letting the public kinda come through as well. It it, you know, it's just my thoughts, so. Cuz I think if you you're gonna get two thirds of the county that are gonna come back and say, they're gonna, they're gonna want every single parcel scrubbed. Is what my thoughts are. And maybe NIICAG's been through this before and this is the way they do it. But, you know, he didn't make it sound like that at the last meeting. He made it sound like they, you know, do a blanket ag. Uh, I know that that's what we did in Winnebago County and then uh, as instances pop up, that's when things get cleaned up.
So it almost sounds like we we need to establish a goal here. Is is our goal to I I know you're trying to be accurate as we can be moving forward, Jeff, but so, but is our goal to get everything as accurate as we can or is our goal to get countywide zoning established? Cuz I don't, I personally just think it's not gonna happen both ways right now.
I I think there there's, there's two things and the two things fall into a a horse and cart situation, not a, it's not a chicken and egg where it doesn't matter which comes first. In this case, it matters which comes first, right? So the first thing is should zoning rules apply countywide? If the answer to that question is yes, then the next thing that we have to do is say, okay, well, we've got three quarters of the land in the county that has no zoning designation. We have to apply a zoning designation across all of that land. One approach, as as Matt is advocating, is, well, you apply A one to everything and sooner or later, things will come out in the wash when people wanna change stuff. That's one approach. Um, I don't believe that's, I mean, my personal opinion is I I don't think that's the 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 uh, what's the right word? It's not an approach I uh, agree with. Uh, it is an approach. Um, the other approach that I'm advocating is we start with the premise, everything is ag, but those things that are blatantly obvious that are not ag, call them for what they are. The campground is a campground. That's commercial recreation. You can see it. It's there. It's, that's how it operates. If you tell them that they're ag, that gives them permission to do things on that property that is not appropriate for the nature of that property because it's a campground. It's not ag. Likewise, with the scrapyard and the the gravel.
But right, but right now, and I'm just talking out loud here to try to work through the process here. If we adopted our current, without updating, our current zoning regulations that are already in place, all of that is pretty much spelled out in there. So even if they get theoretically covered under ag, if there's a dispute or a question or something that needs to be changed in the future, even without mapping these out immediately, they're not gonna fit under the slot of ag. And if there's a question raised, then at that time, hey, we're countywide zoned and by our current outdated zoning ordinances, we have to change your property cuz it's clearly a gravel pit or clearly something industrial or something that doesn't clearly fit into that ag slot that we started out as.
Right, but again, Todd, it it it's two separate things. It's the zoning ordinance, it's the rules, and then it's assigning the zones to the land. Those are two separate things. We can say the rules apply across the land. That's number one. Number two, the zoning commission, we have to have some kind of zoning assignment across the land to start with.
Did this, was the supervisors, I'm sorry to mean to interrupt, Jeff, was the supervisors' wishes, did you get a feeling of, was their wishes just to get it countywide zoned for now or was it to get all this stuff hammered out, all the details? What what was their, what was their goal? What was their
Their goal is to get re- their goal is to get recommendations from us. But again, I I I I I I gotta figure out a different way to say this because the way I've been saying it um, hasn't, hasn't um,
Well, what you're saying makes perfect sense.
Not communicate.
You're you're, you're a very black and white, A, B, C, D, and the county, the people of the county aren't that way cuz it's been chaos for years and they don't wanna change.
I I I get that, Todd, but saying, saying the rules apply to everybody, that's one, that's step one. The rules apply to everybody. Step two is we have to tell everybody, well, what zone does their land fall under? Right, that's the second thing that we have to do.
If if step one is done, I think that's a lot easier. If we have countywide zoning, then it's pretty hard for them to go, yeah, you're right. I do have a gravel pit here. Maybe I should
We can't, we can't, we can't just say zoning applies to everybody and then pause. Right? Zoning, when you get down to it, is a set of rules and then assigning the zones, the designation of the zones to the various aspects of of land.
Hey, I'm gonna stop you there a second, Jeff. If I throw A one designation on, we'll do Trent Hills great quarry. We all know it's quarry. We all know it's not within a zone area, right?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna use that as my perfect example. I throw it as an A one. What does that affect going forward that he does or doesn't do as an A one? It's a pre-existing grandfathered in. What is the negative of having him as an A one? What am I missing?
So, two things. One, we know as a government body, it is not being used for ag. We are an efficient government body.
But but that changes nothing.
It does. You know, it does. It
Means nothing.
Guys, it does. We are a government body. We know something to be in a certain condition and what you're advocating is that we turn a blind eye and apply a second condition. Set that aside for a moment. If it's zoned as ag, there's a page of uh, permitted and accessory uses of things that they can do on that property. He could build a swimming pool, tennis court, basketball court, um, uh, seed dealership, kennel. He can do a a whole variety of things.
Yep. But right now, that's the way it is anyway. Without having any zoning, that's the way it is. We gotta get
I know that's the way it is.
In place
Yeah.
Before you can, if you don't, like you you said a minute ago, the first thing is to get the zoning in place. And then you said step two is to figure out what has to be zoned what. But to me, what we're saying is we gotta get countywide zoning before we can even think about whether it's grandfathered or whether they're following the rules or without getting countywide zoning accepted, step two doesn't matter. And and how, like what David said.
But step two, step two, though, is part of zoning. Zoning is the assignment of the zones to the land.
I live in a zoned area and I could drive to the other side of the county and me living right in this zoned area and currently the guy that lives in the zoned area on the other side of the county, we can put up a swimming pool or a shed or whatever we wanna do. It is very little say either way. Legal or not, that's what's happening. Cause it's because we don't have countywide zoning. Go ahead.
Yeah, just, this is something that I was kinda thinking about traveling here this week. You know, if 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 the commission said. You guys voted a simple, do you think the uh uh the mid? The whole county needs to be zoned, you know, uh is it that that motion's on the table and it passes. I think a recommendation to the to the board of supervisors is yes, we need to have zoning. Uh countywide, which would trigger them to have their. Uh, the current zoning amended to open it up to all the townships. And then that would allow for the three readings along with the public hearings. So it kinda puts everything on the the board of supervisors to hear the public's conversation or comments. You know, it's it's, you know, are are your guys' part, I think, just as. As the commission is to understand, do we need it or not? As a zoning administrator, I think we need zoning, but I think it needs to fall back on the supervisors. Um, because when I, when I talked to AJ, I said it's it it even Nycag guy. It's just as simple as changing the zorn, the ordinance um at the very beginning. Uh, to the legal descriptions of what it covers. They they they, you know, the the zonings, um it's recommended. To the to the board of supervisors and then the board of supervisors have to adopt it. And and there's certain regulations that they have to go to adopt the zoning uh. To 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 adopt it, which is multiple meetings, um you know, I know for at least three readings. Um, uh, uh, also with, you know, um. Mailers and and in public input and stuff like that, that that that's, I think. You know, I think everything that Jeff doing, you you're doing i- i- is perfect, but what if all of this work? Going forward, if you recommend, cause that's literally, that's that's what's gotta come from you guys to the board of supervisors. Is on meeting XYZ, it was recommended by the planning and zoning commission that we need to get zoned. And put it back on the supervisors to literally have conversations with the public on what and how that's gonna look like. Cause that'll be, that'll be, that'll literally open the whole book to either it's gonna happen or not.
That's that's not the process. Um, the process, and I've got the document here. That the supervisors um sent me, it was texted. Um, I know you can't see it very well. Um, but it the 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 requirement, you're right. In that the zoning commission first has to decide if we believe zoning should be applied. Um, across the land. And if you may recall, that was step one. On the uh that document that I had uh brought up last week to propose plan for countywide zoning. And I said, if the result is negative, if we don't think zoning should be applied countywide, our job is done. In which case, the wind ordinance is not gonna apply across the county. The supervisors um have have indicated. That they don't think that it would apply across the county. If zoning only applies to three townships. Then the wind ordinance probably only applies to three townships. If on the other hand, we decide, yes, we should have zoning, then you're right, Matt. The one thing that would have to be done is that we would recommend to the supervisors. That they address the parenthetical that falls in the underneath the title of the zoning ordinance. To remove the parenthetical, the statement that limits it to Heartland, Brookfield and Danville townships. They take that off of the uh of the ordinance, the ordinance applies. Countywide. However, the next set of things that we have to do at the very top of the list. Is have a zoning map for each township um countywide. Uh, use the existing zoning ordinance. Um, we, the planning and zoning schedules a public hearing. The township zoning maps are placed on the county website. Um, we send the uh, we direct the county staff to send letters to the property owners. Currently in the townships not zoned, telling them of the public hearing and what their land would be zoned as. Then we consider recommending approval to the supervisors. We get that to the supervisors and then they have their own set of public hearings. So we can't do this without public hearings. And our recommendation to the supervisors can't simply be apply zoning countywide. Because the land has to be assigned a zoning designation. If um, if I get my screen back here. So if we zoom in, I turned on um zoning on the uh the GIS here. As soon as it loads back up again. So you can see the zoning designation. Um. Commercial, commercial, uh C two, commercial, et cetera. Um, that's. Zoning. The rules are the rules, but the zoning. That we have to do is assign the designation to the land. Now. As has been advocated, we could assign the designation to the land everywhere as ag. And in fact, the map presumes ag unless it shows something else. Um. We could do that. I mean, if if the majority of you guys feel that. Everything should have an ag designation and we just, you know, wait the however many years it takes for it to come through the wash. To designate the sand pit or the gravel pit as um uh industrial. You know, if if that's the majority uh vote recommendation, then that's what we do. I personally believe that we shouldn't do that because we know, well, again, one. We are an official government body. We know it to be true that that land is not ag. Therefore, I would vote that it be designated as the zone that is appropriate for that land.
Okay, so Jeff, um, all all the work that you compiled into those parcels. Um, that's a pretty accurate update to meet the goals that you're talking about for the non-zoned. The current non-zone townships, correct? To to get this updated the way you're talking?
Uh, yeah, I I think it's a, it's a best effort, yeah. And as I said in my note, I'm sure there's some that are missing.
Right.
But again, those.
There's gonna be updates in the future. So for the sake of moving this forward, if it's as simple as as a saying, yeah, we we agree. With the work you've done for the things that are obvious. If it's as simple as that to move this forward, I don't see a problem with that. I just don't wanna. I just don't wanna make a huge bunch of changes and spend a lot of time in our committee. Just to get the the yes vote through the supervisors of getting countywide. Zoning completed quickly, because we already know. We already know there's gonna be a lot of changes in the next two, three years to updating a lot of these things, whether they're grandfathered, whether they're. Zoned A one egg or if they're done accurately for every little business everywhere. We we know it's not gonna be that perfect. So is where you're sitting, just with your list that you've already done the work on. Is is your list comprehensive enough, you believe? To move this forward with that being the recommendation to get the countywide zoning?
Well, one, I think it, I I need to um update based on our conversation just a little while of. A little while ago about the exempt land and the um uh, you know. Change, so, you know, the recreation, conservation, wildlife management stuff be A one. Uh, as opposed to critical natural resource, I need to make those changes, but otherwise, yeah, a- and I tell you, the way I came up with that. Is just like this. I zoomed into this level. I started in the top left part of the county. And I just, I went across the map like that. And when I came to um junkyards or campgrounds or churches. Well, I had land use turned on so I could see the exempt. Um, that's how I came up with. Uh, where'd it go? That's how I came up with that list of parcels.
Hey, quick question.
Scanning across the county for the stuff that's obvious.
Did you, did you pick up uh? Um, I I've got a parcel number here for you just because I'm just gonna, like I said, I'm play- playing devil's advocate here. Um.
Yep.
It's zero five. Two seven.
Nope.
Okay, so go back to your uh beacon and type that in for me. Zero five two seven four zero 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 five. And I'm only picking on this guy because I drive by it all the time. This is an old picture. It's on the Joyce Blacktop. And this guy probably has ten thousand washers and dryers out there.
It's cross familiar devils, yep.
Yep, you know where I'm at?
Yep.
So, and that's just one for instance. Believe me, I want this to be as thorough as possible, but. I I worry for not just my liability, but the commission's liability if we if we miss something. Or we add something that that maybe not, you know, we just gotta be able to be ready to go to fight for whatever we do, so.
Yeah, so I I think the. One, you know, just because the guy's got a couple of truckloads of washers and dryers in his yard. I I don't know, you know, that he's doing anything other than, you know, maybe he's a.
An obvious reset.
Some kinda, some kinda hoarder or collector or something, I don't know.
But what if the neighbor across says, hey, he needs to be zoned?
Yeah, right, so so here's, 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 here's my position on this.
Yep.
As I said, I think this, this would be a a best effort. It's it's hitting the stuff that is, you know, it jumps out at you. Um, that is blatantly obvious. It is not going to catch everything. The whole purpose. Of coming up with this is to be able to give that data to Nycog as the. Paper I got from the supervisor says, give that to Nycog so they could make the maps. They make the maps, we publish the maps on the county website, we schedule the public hearing. So that people have an opportunity to look at the maps. We send the letters and the letters are gonna have to go to everybody in those nine townships. And say, here's what's happening uh with zoning, here's what your land would be zoned as. And then people would have an opportunity during that public meeting um to raise an issue. Now, if this guy. Or his neighbor says, hey, you've got me designated as rural residential. I'm a scrapyard, I should be light industrial. You know, we can, we can look at that. Or if the neighbors say, hey, he's running a scrapyard, he shouldn't be zoned residential. He should be zoned as uh uh light industrial. Then we can, we can look at those things. That that's, that's a classic example of, you know, the smaller stuff that. Likely has been missed, but you know, we're we're hoping would either be brought up in those public hearings. Or is gonna come out in the wash at some point in the future. But I I think we have a responsibility to zone. Assign zone designations. To parcels that are blatantly obvious, not ag.
But but this is making it feel like now we're the zoning, I don't wanna say this, we're the police instead of a commission. There's already rules set up for these places. That example that Matt just came up with. Geez, I'm pretty sure that's already in a zoned township. And there's already rules that says whether he's ag or he's light or he's, there's already.
Well, if if he's in a zone township, um, right now, there's no zone designation there, so he's ag.
Right, and so like what David Quisley was saying earlier, it isn't gonna make any difference right now because they're doing it anyway. Our goal has to be, do we gotta get this so perfect that it fails? Or is our goal to get countywide zoning? Especially if this is gonna be holding back the wind ordinance. Cause before we said we didn't need countywide zoning, we could have a standalone wind ordinance. We started out saying we needed countywide zoning. We didn't think it was gonna get countywide zoning, so we built the wind ordinance to stand alone. Now they're saying, well. We think we gotta have countywide zoning to make the wind ordinance hold. Good. Then let's get countywide zoning in so we can finish the wind ordinance, get it to pass, fail, whatever. So that they can apply wind to the rest of the county and we'll worry about freezers and junkyards and and deer farms. Next year. We've already got land designation in place. They're they're already, this, the place with the recycled freezers and shit. They're already in a zone thing, whether they're zoned agriculture or their grandfathered. Past agriculture, it doesn't matter right now. We gotta have a goal of either getting the zoning done and to get it to pass. And update everything after that. I I I. I understand it'd be nice to have everything done well, and I'm not against using this, the work you've done as examples. Or getting that into play if that's what everybody feels we need to do. I just don't wanna get so caught up on. Holding back the countywide zoning. This county's needed countywide zoning since nineteen seventy, obviously. And we still haven't got it. And these are the reasons why. Nobody wants to be told I can't have freezers on my place so that I gotta change my designation or that I gotta apply for a permit. If that's what's coming in the future, that's what's coming in the future, but that's why it hasn't been done yet. Cause nobody wants to get so picky with the rules. That's why we don't have countywide zoning.
So here's the thought.
I totally agree of having it. I just don't know that it's the time to push it.
So I guess my my thought would be, if you call everything A one and then. Uh, maybe at these public hearings, you have a large map that's identifying these properties of, yeah, they're they're agriculture right now. So they're grandfathered in, but we know, or we've identified these, I should say, as they're not agriculture. So in the future, these places expand or build buildings or whatever, then they will be, you know, zone commercial. At least we've identified it then, so we can prove, you know, you you can prove that it's identified because Jeff did a lot of work on this, but. I agree with Todd, I mean, I I'm just personally afraid that if if you try to, you know, designate it, which it's obvious, like Jeff said. It's obvious that what it is, but then all of a sudden you're gonna get, well, they've been identified. Now I might get identified. I don't want it.
Yeah, it's it's gonna turn everybody off too quick. I mean, even at our Kentset meeting. Uh, for the wind ordinance. That is one of the statements that the Meyer boy stood up and said, what's next? You're gonna tell me what's, how tall my corn's gotta be? Because it all reeks of zoning and excessive rules and more paperwork. That's what everybody's so afraid of.
We, you dropped off there for a little while. We couldn't, we couldn't hear much of what you were saying.
Okay, everybody is so scared of the of this zoning and all the rules that are coming and all the changes. And that's why there's been so much resistance to it. That was even brought up. By a Myers at the uh, what is it, the June sixth meeting we had on the wind ordinance at the Kentset gym? That was even a comment that was brought up by the public, that they were concerned of what. That was even a comment that was brought up by the public, that they were concerned of what's next with all the zoning. What's next? Because they're afraid of it getting too stiff and too many rules. The public, the public can't move that fast.
Let's break, let's break this into the, into the two pieces. To start with step one. Vote on should the zoning rules apply across the county. I'll put that motion on the table. I make a motion that the zoning ordinance be amended to remove the geographical limitation so that the rules apply countywide.
Jeff, you cannot make a motion as the head.
On a, in a, in a small committee, the chair does have the right to do that. Because of the smallness of the community, of the committee.
I'll disagree with you on that. Um, I think it, I, I think it's three or less, um, but I don't have the rule in front of me, Jeff.
You think the, you think it's a three or less?
That's what I was thinking, if it's, if it's a group of, uh, four or more, I don't think the chair can make a motion, but.
Okay, I guess I'm not aware of the three, I thought it was a, a, a larger, small group, but, okay, I would say I, I can't make the motion. We gotta get past this step one. So I would ask if there's a motion, or we just continue talking about this stuff ad infinitum.
Uh, um, I move that we recommend to establish countywide zoning to all of Worth County and apply A1 agricultural designation to the additional ground.
I think we should split that because you're asking us to vote on.
I have the right to make the motion as I want, Jeff. You guys can second it, not second it, vote yes, vote no. That's up to you. But I've, I've made the motion.
I will second that.
Yep, and ho- hold on.
Anything after David?
Down to.
What's that, Matt?
Okay, so I wanna make sure I get David's, uh, motion correct. To rezone uh, all of Worth County unzoned as A1.
Yes.
And, well, that was, that was two.
Yeah, it was zoned across the county and designated as.
Okay. I'd like to ask for a little discussion on that before we vote. If we designate that right as A1, okay, hold on, say this. Our, our current, our current rules would be what David's saying. Our current, our current, uh, our current formulation of zoning that's already set up in our county. David, is what you're saying is, is that A1 rule would apply just the same as it does currently in the three zoned townships, just moving the same rules over. So it isn't a blanket of A1, but it would be an A1 designation for now, right? I mean.
No, it would be a blanket of A1, is the way he put the motion.
Right.
Again, the rules applying is one thing. Assigning one of these several zone designations is a separate thing. These, these are, the land has to be designated as, so if the rules apply, then step two, you have to designate the land. David's motion says the rule should apply and the land designation should be A1 everywhere.
Okay, so if, if, just further discussion here, because I think David's on the right track, but it shouldn't be as A1, but default to A1, just like everything does currently, does that make more sense?
I don't understand your distinction, that you have to, one and the same.
You have to, that, what I'm saying is, is I wanna designate everything as A1, so that is your default. If you choose to do something other than A1 on your ground and choose to change, then at that point, you go through the zoning, uh, apply for permits, and in most cases, then you'd have to change your classification to represent what you're actually doing, so. What I'm saying is, I, I, I'm not willing to designate the quarry as quarry today. I'm not willing to call those people out.
Right, because in the future, this is gonna change anyway, sooner or later. The, the, the egg designation is just our default, and it always has been so far in this county.
Yep.
Whether they're grandfathered or changes in the future, it, it gets us covered for now to get the, the countywide zoning, and then it can be fine tuned soon afterwards if it has to. Am I understanding that correctly? Okay. Matt, do you have anything you can add to that?
Yeah, I'm just.
Ask your.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm just trying to make sure I get the motion right here on my notes here. Uh, motion by, uh, um, by Dave, David, uh, to rezone all the unzoned townships of Worth County and assign unzoned parcels to be zoned as A1. Is that what I understood, David?
That is what I am proposing in my motion, yes.
Matt, can you, can I ask for some input?
Sure.
Discussing from you on that, please?
It, it, I, I just think it just, it, and this is just my personal opinion, I think it just, it throws the blanket statement out there. Be, it, it's worked in other counties before. Um, and I think it just takes some of the liability off of the zoning district for either or zoning commission, or even myself, that either we misassign or we miss something. Um, tha- that's just my, my opinion, um.
But, but it gets us moving in the right direction so that it can be updated in the future once it's zoned or once it's passed.
I honestly think that it's, it would, it would be an easier sell to the public with something simpler like that.
Okay, I, I do too.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I wanna point out that if we were to assign everything ag except these that are, you know, this page, we have two pages here of, um, parcels that would be zoned as something other than ag. If we apply ag to everything, then each of these parcels are gonna be the subject of a separate public hearing with those landowners and their neighbors at some point in the future, um, to assign them the appropriate zone. I believe as an official body, we have a responsibility that if we know these things to be as they are today, we should do that today, have that public hearing at large with all of these folks. And if the gravel pit or whomever, the campground owner disputes the fact that they're a gravel pit or a campground, we can have that conversation with them. But we should assign it accurately if we know it to be not ag. I think we have a, a, uh, ethical responsibility to, to do that. I know we haven't got a second on the, uh, on the motion yet. Um, but I will tell you, because it's a two-part motion, there's two parts to it. I feel strong enough about the responsibility on, it was seconded, I didn't lose an audio, I didn't know.
Yep, yes.
Okay.
Now, uh, another question I have, Jeff, on this is, is we passed this. If I understood you correctly, the supervisors are still gonna have to have.
I believe we should have, I believe we should have countywide zoning. But I believe that the zoning assignments should be at least a, a, a best effort to start our, our first public hearing with.
Right, right, um. But if we pass this, then the supervisor's gotta ratify it, and there'll be public discussion after that.
They're gonna have their own, they're, they, they have to have their own public hearings already, after they get our recommendation, if they decide to move forward.
Okay.
Which is why I, I thought that it would be best if we broke David's motion into two separate things. Because I think they are two separate questions.
I think they can be, but I think they can also go through as moved.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of David's motion, uh, applying zoning countywide with a blanket designation of A1? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We can't hear you, Jeff, you're talking.
There we go.
You're still muted, Jeff.
My, I'm gonna ask NICOG their opinion on if we can apply this ag, um, countywide, and they say, yeah, no problem with that, then that's what they'll, that's what we'll do. I'm just not certain that's gonna be the answer we're gonna get from them, but.
Okay, so the motion, what, what, what was, was by, uh, everybody, uh, voted yay on that, 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 that tier, right?
Correct.
Did you do anything different, Jeff? You were.
I'm sorry? Well.
You were muted when you're, when you're, when you're talking about, uh, all those say aye, and then you, you were muted, so I just, I wanna make sure that I get everything down.
Hello?
There you go. You're intermittent, Jeff.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, I don't know what's going on here, um, yeah, so I was saying, I'm for.
You're breaking up still, we can't, we can't.
Appropriate thing to do, so I was opposed to the motion, the two-part motion.
Okay.
And I also mentioned that I'm going to ask NICOG, um, if they think it's okay that we can make this blanket ag across everything, even when we know it's not. Um, if they say it's okay, then that's the map that we'll have them produce. If they say that, nah, you can't really do that, then we're gonna have to revisit this. Um, I'll let everybody know after I talk to NICOG tomorrow, um. So I guess the next thing on the agenda is, um, setting our first public hearing. The first public hearing, um, I don't think that we would, we, we would have the maps and everything, the assignments yet. The first public hearing is really just about informing people the, um, the direction that we're going. That, um, we would say we are, you know, the zoning commission believes that we should have zoning countywide, that we believe that everything should start with a, um, ag designation. And then as things come to light or, uh, people wanna make changes, that, um, those things would come out in the wash over the years, that whatever is in place today, um, that may be non-conforming would be able to continue non-conforming use so long as it doesn't change. Um, and let them know that we would be producing, um, zoning map in the future. And we would have a, a second public hearing. So really, it's just a, you know, this, this first was more of just a public information kind of a thing. And I think that's something that we should do sooner than later.
Wha- 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 with this, this motion and, and recommendation to the, to the supervisors, doesn't that start the ball rolling for them? And ma- maybe I'm.
Do we even need?
No, we have, we, we can't, we can't, we can't give, we can't give them a recommendation until we've had a public hearing on it.
Okay. That's what I was gonna check, but, uh.
Yeah, it's, that's, we, we've gotta have a, a public hearing before we can have a final recommendation to the supervisors.
True.
And with the, um, notice requirements, um, so the earliest we'd be able to get it in the paper would be next week, and we gotta have.
Can't hear you, Jeff.
Jeff.
No, I'm still on it. Technology at its finest.
Yep.
You guys hear me?
There you go.
There we go.
All right. I don't see what's going on with the phone. Um, get that down, so, as I was saying, we have to have a public meeting, uh, Uh, we have to give notice between four and twenty-one, four and twenty day, four and twenty-one days. So we're talking the week of the twentieth or the twenty-seventh. Is when we would have our first public meeting, just to inform folks of direction. What our thoughts are.
Sooner the better.
I agree. Should it be, uh, Saturday or a weeknight?
Most people don't have much going on on Monday nights, do they? Wrestling is coming to an end. Church nights usually Wednesday.
Basketball's wrapping up. Yep.
Art apartments are usually beginning of the month.
So you're thinking Monday, the twenty-first?
Unless anybody's got a better idea, that gets us soon in case we do end up making changes or needing to make much changes based on public input.
Mm-hmm, it is a. Uh, an official holiday.
Yeah, that means it's a day for me, but probably bad for, for business.
I'm just saying, you, you know, it is President's Day's official holiday. Trap aboard the trade is closed, that's why I know.
I thought you didn't say you was a county worker or state worker like me there, but okay.
Like the night I'm sitting here trading, or I work, I work on this, because beans are up another ten cents, so, yeah. Well, I don't know if you wanna do that Monday or you wanna go to Tuesday, I was just. Those are fine with me, I, I, I'm, I'm easy.
Tuesday would work better, but I can make Monday work if we need to.
Well, do you think that we would be missing people if we went with Monday, David?
Possibly, I mean, cause there are. There are people who are closed on that Monday and if they do a three-day weekend in Minneapolis.
Probably President's Day sales.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if it is a big deal, but.
So, I mean, one day's not gonna make a difference one way or the other, I think, so the twenty-second, Tuesday, the twenty-second.
Yep.
Um. Do seven o'clock or do we do a earlier? I don't remember when we did the, when we did the mi- the wind.
I'm good with seven.
Seven.
Seven o'clock on Tuesday, the twenty-second? Okay. Um. Do, do you guys think, did the, um, Kinsit Community Center? Work? Well, when we did the wind meeting there, it's kinda central for the county.
I, I think it's the central location and big enough, you know, twenty people come, two hundred come, they'll fit.
Right. Okay.
Reasonable. Assistance from everybody then.
So February twenty-second. At seven PM. Okay, I'll get the notice in the paper.
Yep.
And, um, I'll put some, um, bullet points together. Um, things that, um, I think we should talk about that, get that out to you guys, so you can take a look at it, give some feedback. Um. And like I say, I, I'll let you know what, um, NICOD says. Tomorrow after I talk to them, if we can just apply A1 to everything. And then if so, we'll get them started making the maps. First, I don't know what maps they really need to make if everything is A1, but.
Well, you do, and, and maybe we should have discussed this earlier, but I'm making the assumption that. If the town is already zoned at. You know, Northwood is this block on the map, that stays as local, right? Just like, it's two miles, you let them keep it?
Yeah, the, the zoning, the zoning ordinance only applies to the unincorporated areas of the county.
Right, that, that was my assumption, but I wanna make sure we're all.
Yep, yep.
Yep.
Okay, um. Alright, well, that's it for tonight then, unless anybody else has anything.
So, just so I understand, it's just gonna be a, a, a public hearing to hear public input on the twenty-second for countywide zoning. Um. And, and that's pretty much it, right? Cause you guys are gonna hear public input, then we'll have another meeting after that to. Uh, make the final recommendation to the border supervisors, right?
Correct.
Okay. So if nobody shows up, it'll be a short meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Also, in the, in the, in the letter to the, the paper and stuff, just let them, give them my email address, so that zoning email address, any, uh, written stuff like that can come to me too, so.
Yep, yep.
And I'll share that with you guys, so. Perfect.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I've been making the motion, so I moved to adjourn.
Okay. Anybody else wanna leave?
It's gonna be a waiting game, okay, I'll, I'll second it.
I already had it typed in, Justin, so I appreciate that.
No problem.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, thanks guys, the meeting is adjourned.
Also, I did look up to, uh, Robert's Rules and under twelve people in a, uh, uh, a committee. Um. The, the chairman, uh. Can, can, can make a motion, so.
Yeah, I, I, I thought it was a larger number than three, but I didn't.
I, I appreciate that, Matt.
Yep, but they also, they also say, um. It's pretty rare and usually they, they, they like to have a, a motion given, so anyway.
Yeah, it's frowned upon even if it's legal, right?
Yep, yep, so it could be challenged, I guess, is what it was saying too, so, but anyway. Thought I'd throw that out there.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, thanks, guys. Have a good night.
You too.
Um, so other than, other than the, the public meeting on the twenty-second. Um, I don't have anything else on our calendar until the March meeting. Um. Which would be March ninth, which is two weeks after the public meeting. Um. You think we should have the, should we bump that meeting up a week? I know we've already adjourned, and I apologize. Kinda depends on what we hear in the.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, see what we hear at the meeting.
We'll leave it for March ninth, subject to earlier. Okay, right. That's it, thanks, guys.
Yep.